Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Do we have any citizens to be heard today on items that are not on the agenda?
Not Mr. Chair.
Okay. No citizens, alright. We'll move into the approval of the bills and vouchers.
Move approval of bills and vouchers?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kaylee, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Their approval of minutes from April 6th and April 13th.
Move approval of minutes.
Move approval of minutes from April 6th and 13th.
Alright, I'm gonna go with, I heard the one to my left first is the motion by Ebinger, and a second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Alright, we'll go to our COVID update. Kathy and Jamie again. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I just handed out the information for this week, our weekly report. The most notable, as you can see, the active cases are coming down a bit. Last week when we were here, we had 257, and this week 190. So, we're slowly getting back in the right direction. A few more hospitalizations. I talked with the epidemiologists about Minnesota hospitals, and they're still seeing a number of hospitalizations. They haven't declined very much. And so, but, you know, they're manageable. And then I talked with, on the North Dakota side, they're about the same. So, it's not been a huge increase in hospitalizations. Our 14-day case rate is 64.01. Now, that was an increase from last week, but as you see, this is a delayed number. So, they, you know, it only goes through April 10th. So, we suspect that this number obviously will go down with the cases as the active cases are real time, and the 14-day case rate is a bit delayed. So, and then on the next page, we have our active cases by age, and you can see quite the, there's quite a large percentage. We've always have seen the 20 to 24 throughout these last, particularly this last month, but we also see now active cases in 10-year-olds and all the way up through the 40 to 49 has a number, but you see a lot of it in the youth. So, 10-year, 10 to 14 is up there, and the 25 to 29, and the 30 to 34. So, we've got a variety of active cases throughout those ages. Now, again, you know, the vaccine that is on the market for us is only 16 and older, and that's just the one vaccine. So, you know, the, anyone younger than 16 obviously is not eligible to get a vaccine. And then the cumulative cases are the 20 to 24 per age range, so that's still the highest one cumulatively. I talked about the hospitalization, so we did see an uptick in Minnesota, and then, and hopefully we're seeing, we're going to be seeing a decline. The deaths in Clay County are still at 90 cumulatively. So, the hospitalizations and ICU hospitalizations, it's the 29,477 for hospitalizations, and the 6,006 for ICU. And then I added, I think Commissioner Mojo, you asked about the COVID cases per zip code? So, I added a separate sheet. We had to pull that data off, but anyway, this is the cumulative cases per zip code, so I have all of the cities and zip codes, and then the number of cumulative cases. We can't get active cases per zip code. I've checked with the epidemiologist at MDH, and this is the best we can do with the cumulative cases, so hopefully.
I just wanted to say thank you. This really helps to get a whole-picture view of what we were seeing and are seeing whole-countywide, so thank you for doing that.
Sure. And then I also included, last week, we didn't have the information on our saliva test site. The individual that provides the information was out, so we have it today. So, this is, you can see, we started in January. Well, we have, we have numbers before that, but just what we've been sharing, and then through April 18th. So, that week of April 18th, there's still over 1,000 tests being done. 707 in Minnesota residents, and 303 in the non-Minnesota or mostly North Dakota residents, so with a 4.11 positivity rate for that week. So, that also has declined since the last couple of weeks. So, there's kind of the snapshot of the saliva testing site, and it is still functioning and operational, so still no word on when they may not provide that testing site, but so far, we're still continuing that. And I'll pass it over to Jamie.
Before you go to Jamie, the chart for Clay County active cases by age, you have the date of April 27th. Is that, is that fairly consistent with that date and time? Or is that just the date of the report?
Yeah, for the, for the active cases by age range, yes. Yep, it's fairly consistent with that real time.
So, we clearly have, we clearly have some cases going on in our school systems.
We do. And we're really working with the schools to at least get the 16 and older vaccinated, but, you know, anyone under 16. So, they're still doing the quarantine for when they have cases. I know that they quarantined one classroom, I just heard yesterday, in one of the schools, so there's still cases going on.
I think Commissioner Mojo is aware of that.
Okay.
Is there a, is there, are we helping them with contact tracing in that case, or do they have, do their own within their school system?
They actually do that internally, but they're also working with the case investigators. So, all of the cases are reported to our staff on a daily basis as they come up, but they're working pretty independently now. Initially, they were working closer, but they're reporting what they have to our staff, our case investigators.
Thank you.
So, we did bring some new information that we were able to receive on the data. We've talked a little bit about breaking it down in terms of vaccine and age groups. And so, we did, this next handout is a breakdown of the Clay County cases, but what we have added here is the people with at least one dose in the age group. So, we've got 16 and 17-year-olds, 222. I'm struggling to look at this myself, so I hope you can see. And we've got the 18 to 49, a little over 8,050.
Bring my magnifying.
Yeah, right? I'm going, let's see if I can move it a little farther. And then we have the 50 to 64s, which we've had, that 4,000, and then the 65-plus at a little over 6,000, and those that we don't have in age. So, our total of 19,137, I think that is, with the first dose. So, basically, this is kind of breaking it down by age group. We did also, we talked about our MEC system, that it's not necessarily all of the doses that are going into MEC from North Dakota. And we keep asking the question and keep getting a consistent answer that there is a lag in that information coming to Minnesota. So, the most important message in this is that we consistently see our numbers low, but we feel very strongly that they're higher than what's represented, which is coming through Minnesota and out of the MEC system, so.
That 19,157 are ones that received their shot in Minnesota.
And that's just the first dose. So, if it was in North Dakota and it did get into the MEC system, it's counted. If it didn't, it's not. We talked about the VA and the pharmacies on the North Dakota side that is not coming over consistently, so. Let's see, so, and then just basically the comparison to the statewide. So, what we did with this data compared to what we've been looking at is that breakdown by age. Do you have any questions about that?
No, it's a good report, I like it.
Okay. And then another map that we added is a breakdown of doses by zip code. So, this is, you know, we had a breakdown of cumulative cases by zip code. This is a breakdown of doses by zip code, just to kind of take a look of where most, the percentage, so total doses plus the percentage by zip code in Clay County. And the highest number of doses have been in Moorhead, but, you know, it's really pretty consistently high throughout our whole county, so I think this is a good map to really show that we are seeing vaccine across the county.
Well, I think we should maybe point out the fact that the zip code 56536 has 52% of its population vaccinated, and it looks across the board that Commissioner Gross's district has the highest vaccination percentage.
Wow. I guess he gets accolades for that.
Yeah, I'm out there trying to get them.
Spreading the good word.
Is that your door-to-door campaign?
So, then the last page, we have the total of doses administered by Clay County Public Health alone, 13,359. And I just looked at the state map last night, and we're pretty high in the state for public health agencies and the doses we have administered, plus we have reached 100% consistently for that three-day, the 72-hour turnaround. So, we're pretty proud of that. We're also pleased to hear that the 72-hour has been suspended, so that's no longer. So, we're looking at.
Finally.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're at seven days now, so. So, looking at the doses that we administered, we'd actually planned on a low number of doses last week. We planned for 626 because, odd number because of Pfizer. We did have an evening clinic last week to support students in the schools, 16, 17, 18-year-olds and their parents. And we probably, of 126 doses, we did a little over 80. So, we were disappointed, but at the same time, we had been pushing out to parents that there's an opportunity. We didn't have Pfizer available to us, but we were pushing out the opportunities on the North Dakota side through the Sanford and Essentia clinics. And so, what we're hearing is that they're accessing it and they're getting vaccinated, but we still, you know, we finally got our hands on some, and we had a clinic last week. So, of that 626 total doses we planned for last week, we actually administered just 373. So, that was a, you know, a disappointing week, but not surprising at all. Based on what we've been seeing in terms of the response for vaccine, we asked for less, knowing that it would be less, so.
But you're able to store the unused vaccine?
Right, with the 72-hour lift there. And, and so this week, we will be doing 300 second doses, at least that's our plan for second doses, and then 342 first doses are planned this week. And so, basically, you know, our numbers are down. We do get a pretty good response now for our second doses because we're pushing that out, the registration a week in advance, so that's really made a big difference too, so that people can get signed up for their second doses, plus our staff are spending a lot of time calling people. If this day doesn't work, can we reschedule you for another day? So, a lot of staff time and energy is going into getting people back in for their second doses. And then the last thing on this page, you had asked for some North Dakota, Cass County and North Dakota vaccine administration data as of 4/25. So, Cass County residents with one dose, 55% of the population, and those fully vaccinated, 47.8, and then compared to North Dakota residents, 46.8% of the population, and 40.2% of the population statewide are fully vaccinated. And so, yeah, that's.
Jamie, the other locations within Clay County where our residents can get the vaccine, whether it's through Sanford, Essentia, or the.
Pharmacies as well.
Pharmacies. Are we, are we hearing, do they all, do they all have adequate supplies?
Yes. And so, there also is a weekly meeting that we have, a regional healthcare coalition region, where they're talking about who needs vaccine basically across our region as well. So, we're pretty saturated when it comes to vaccine right now, so there should be no, no reason a person could not get a vaccine if they're looking for one. One more thing I wanted to talk about too is that we talked about the testing and, or excuse me, the cases in the younger students, and sports-related activities, and Minnesota Department of Health, although they're trying to keep students in school and keeping them active with activities, are also stressing the importance of testing. And so, they are effective. Yesterday, Minnesota is offering organized sports teams additional testing support and options in order to provide testing for them. And so, they can actually, you know, they can go to saliva testing site, they can order a home kit, but they also can order mass testing for their teams, and then also through their school district, they could access testing. So, really just encouraging as they move forward with activities that they comply with the guidance for activities in school, but also encouraging them to be testing if they're participating in these activities. And then just one final thing, the pause on the Johnson &amp; Johnson, you probably heard that that is, has lifted, and so Johnson &amp; Johnson will be available again in the communities.
And one more comment, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We have been working with higher ed, because they have so many students that'll be done soon, and, you know, scattering all over. We did not receive the doses as we requested a number of weeks ago for that, to provide to all of those higher ed students. However, I did secure mobile vaccination from Essentia Health, and so they're going to provide some vaccinations. I believe only one of the higher ed facilities are going to take advantage of that, and that'll be next week. So, they'll be providing, but they offered it to all of them. So, they'll be, you know, the students are kind of at the end of their semester, and so they're in, into finals soon, in final days of classes, so some of that reluctance now was just because there's so much going on for them. But at least one of the higher eds will take advantage of the mobile unit that's going to bring vaccine rate to their campus.
So, Kathy, are you, your hours then that you're doing the vaccines at the MCAMS, is that gonna change, or?
You know, well, like Jamie mentioned, we did an evening clinic for those, you know, students that could get away, so we kind of tailor that each week to determine who, you know, we want to make it accessible to everyone, so if after, if late afternoon and evening hours are better for people, we'll tailor that to those folks. We've always expanded it. We've started, we have also had students, that student nurses have been helping vaccinate, so we've been also wanting to ensure that we can have the students there, and that's usually during the nine to one or nine to two hours. So, we wanted to make both available to them because we have a number of additional vaccinators, but it's also a good experience for them. It's a practical experience that they can participate in, so it's, it's kind of a win-win. So, we've been also tailoring the hours to them, but after next week, I believe, we won't have the student nurses available anymore. So, again, we tailor it. Usually it's during the day, but also we'll provide evening hours.
Any further questions for Kathy or Jamie? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Alright, next we have an update, or request to adopt resolution for 2021-21 to sponsor snowmobile trails. Greg, good morning Greg. Yeah, you can, mhm.
Good morning.
Greg, you're the club president for.
Jay Alsop is the club president. He was not able to make it today.
Oh, okay, okay.
A trail coordinator for.
Okay.
Club.
Alright, well, good morning.
Yep, good morning. We just want to give a summary of our year, just to give you guys an update, what's going on through the year. So, from our sheet here, obviously, it was a very low snow year, so made it difficult for the snowmobiling, although we were able to get out. We'll go through some data later. We do the snowmobile safety classes too for the county. With COVID, as you know, there's been a lot more increase in outdoor activities. Snowmobiling actually saw that same increase, and so our snowmobile safety classes, I mean, we had people calling all through the winter. We were trying to set up three classes because the DNR limited us to 10 kids this year, but we thought it was gonna get too late, so. We had kids coming from the cities by Becker coming up, you know, just because they couldn't find classes anywhere, so it was crazy. We were blessed with about an inch of snow right before the snowmobile safety course, so that was, because we had nothing before that. On a side note, we worked with NDCU mechanical engineering students. They're always looking for projects to design and build stuff. One of the pictures shows one of the stocks I had this year, and yes, we actually had enough snow, you know. That's the beauty of the valley, we get four inches of snow and when the ditches will fill in, so we can ride. So, the ditch was half blown in, and trying to get off the drift, we got stuck, so. So, that packing pan helps where we can go with the unit individually, and by itself, it's virtually, it most of times won't get stuck, so with this pan, it packs the snow and gives us a good base to start with. And so, that's, that's gonna be a benefit for us in the future. And so, you know, it was, that was a good project to get some involvement, because a lot of these kids have never been around snowmobiles and stuff like that, so that was really, really fun project. Some of the other highlights, we moved four miles of trail south of Holly in more scenic areas. The local farmers there were very willing to assist, which was surprising. One of the main push for that is, one of the farmers south of Holly had a lot of grain bags alongside the road, so they were concerned about sleds. So, I thought, ooh, what a great opportunity, let's get this off this straight ditch for, you know, 12 miles. And so, we moved it a mile to the east, and we're going through the trees and next to the swamps and whatnot, so it's more scenic. Unfortunately, this year, the way that, with the low snow, there was barely any snow in those areas, so that made it kind of tough, but when we look where our trail used to go, there was plenty of snow, but, but the big deal was, like where we go by Silver Lake there, if you're familiar with that on County 31, there's a section there, you know, it's cattails right to the road basically, and we're basically almost up on the road with the equipment, and the sleds are basically right on the edge, so that was another reason for doing that, is getting the sleds and our equipment off the roadways, you know, if it feels more safer too, so. And then, the next thing was, we moved a section of trail off Highway 34. MinDOT met with us and said that you need to run two-way trail on Highway 34, because at night, we're supposed to go with the traffic. And so, that presented some challenges, and one very, very unhappy landowner. And so, we were able to secure a location three miles north and run a minimum maintenance road across to hook up with County 31 again. So, that worked out okay. Low snow year, it's hard to tell if that's gonna be good or not, but, so we'll have to judge that again for next year. One of our biggest areas issues we had was some Felton to Yulin. Usually we do two loops, we go, you know, in both directions, a north loop, south loop, so we were not able to complete that loop just because of the low snow up there, it's so grassy and stuff, it doesn't blow around as much like it does in the valley and the dirt, so. So, unfortunately, that was only groomed once, and so the north machine just basically went from Glendon, Moorhead, to Georgetown to Felton, and then came back the next week, so. The south machine had to pick up some of the other stuff the other one didn't do, so they were going from Glendon to Saban, Barnesville to Holly, Lake Park, hit it all, to Yulin, back to Holly, then back to Glendon, and also to North Dakota out by Saban too, and back, so. So, those guys are busy. North Dakota, as you know, we were, we got pushed out of there because the area where it goes down to a single road track to there, and we found out there's no right-of-way on that road. The new development, they gave some right-of-way when they redid that on the east side of that development down there, but the area that goes through the trees, there was no right-of-way given on that road when it was stated, you know, we had made the assumption that there was actual right-of-way there, and so we can't essentially go off the road, and they plow the road most of the way through there now, so.
Are you talking about that cart trail through there?
Yep. And so, they had given us a letter, they got the wrong address, so we got it in like November. Of course, we're putting our signs up already, so we met with them and says, well, hey, you know, we got this kind of late, and our contract, you know, our permit state, we need a 60-day notice. And so, they did give us, you know, let us run it through there again this year, so. But like, in the spring of the year, with it being plowed, it gets down in the dirt, everybody jumps off where the snow is, assuming we had right-of-way, we don't, so we can't do that, so, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to move it, which is unfortunate, because, you know, it's nice to have trees to drive through, it's very scenic, so. And so, we will be moving that, basically, from the landfill road, we'll be going straight east, and then there's a crossing that crosses over the railroad tracks, be a mile west of County 31. So, that was one of our bigger challenges for last year, was to come out with a route for that. The north unit, so we groomed only 13 days last year. 486 miles we put on and 78 hours of man-time. And then, south, they groomed 20 days, there's more snow down south, and 889 miles and 133 hours. Then, as you know, you had passed a resolution to support us earlier for a RTP grant, recreational trails grant, for the purchase of a new groomer. And so, we will be, we have put in for that, we'll find out in June whether we get that, so, because that's a grant for $75,000 to assist us in purchasing equipment, which is huge. And the other thing is, we're starting to look into is, if you've heard about the Firefrost ATV trail up north, I believe it's from Pearlie up by Nielsville, and so the DNR is seeking input for that. So, we're just trying to poke around now, and just to ask you guys to consider if we extend that down into Moorhead or not, you know, whether that can happen. We had some discussion on that last night, because they had paved over the railroad tracks on the, what's, Wall Street, I think it is up there, but now they had to take them out, I guess, to get the cars out of there or something, I don't know what happened, but. So, we want to meet with MetroCog, and, you know, it'll be the county possibly too, to see about, you know, can we extend that all the way down into Moorhead, make that a multi-use trail.
Commissioner Mojo.
So, I serve on the MetroCog committee, and if you need help coordinating with Cindy Gray on there, definitely to at least have the conversations and the starting point, certainly would be willing to help.
Certainly, you know, with the RTP funds available, once you make it a multi-use, it seems like that's almost assured, you get that money.
Yep.
To be able to do that.
Yep.
Do you have any of your trails on paved, trails, are any of your trails paved? Because I, on the Heartland Trail, when we put something in there, they want, it's gotta be paved in order for us to get, get it in, and I just wanted, are any of your trails on paved road now?
Just, no, just, there's one small section in Holly, because they, actually, the Heartland Trail extension, when they redid that intersection on Highway 10, they included, the Heartland Trail's supposed to go through town.
Yeah.
So, and the snowmobiles are supposed to have access to that, so they've got, where we cross Highway 10 on the, on the west side by Muscatell there, that intersection, there's actually, you know, a crosswalk push button there, and they have a paved trail right there, and that's where we cross right there, so we go over that area, but it's, you know, two feet of snow, because when MinDOT comes through there, you know, they leave a big pile, and we come through there to knock that down, so sleds don't have to come off the large embankment, so. So, that's all that we have right now. And when we met with MetroCog on that Heartland Trail extension, you know, we tried to input the designs, and we understand, I mean, obviously, the benefits of the paved trails are huge, but, you know, let's engineer it such that, you know, rather than putting a paved trail right in the middle, move it off to the side and give us just, you know, we need 12 feet of grass is all we need, so.
Well, I guess my contention's always been, the first place snow is gonna melt is on a paved trail.
Absolutely, yep.
But that's where you have to, if you want to do an Heartland Trail or whatever.
Correct, yep.
So, we have to put it on, and it just doesn't make sense, but.
Yep, and that's why I said, you know, if we can give some engineering input, like, you know, like I discussed in the extension meetings, where, you know, put the paved trail, raise it up, you know, you want the water off there anyway. I mean, we'll take the low land, you know, where it's gonna collect slow, that's fine with us, so.
Is the Heartland Trail intended to have snowmobiles?
Yes.
It is? Alright, well, we have before us a request for Resolution 2021-21.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 20, the number you just said.
2021-21. We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. Motion carried. And on your other issue that you're working on, if you uh, like Commissioner Mojo mentioned, if you want to, you know, maybe work through her with MetroCog, and if there's something we can be helpful with, you can come back and see us again.
Okay, perfect.
All right, okay, thank you. All right, the next item is a request for approval to purchase additional ITV court systems for the correctional facility. Good morning, Julie.
Good morning. Yes, I'm here to request some additional equipment.
Want to spend money before you leave?
Uh, I do, but I want to spend inmate money, so that's important to note. So the courts are requesting that we get additional ITV equipment so that we can handle more court proceedings at the jail. In addition to using that, that equipment for that, we can also use inmate programming so we can expand our programming within the jail. So it does fall under inmate welfare. Um, we did have this, um, this equipment looked at by Tim Denton. This was his recommendation. So for us to spend, it appears to be about $8,100. We are requesting that we go ahead and use inmate money to purchase this video equipment.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Julie. On the, uh, your description, you talk about uh, requesting this third one because of the number of court proceedings that are currently going on. Is that a backlog that has resulted because of the pandemic not having court proceedings as scheduled? And if so, do you think this would be eligible for funding that we received federally to deal with COVID issues?
It, it is all resulting from COVID. Um, we normally do our, our court appearances in, in person, but we haven't been able to do that for well over a year now. And the backlog is catching up with us, where we need to run more courtroom ITV.
Okay.
That's a good point. I think it's something, uh, Steve and Brian, that we can consider for, as a reimbursable item too for.
And then, um, because you're using commissary money, how would additional ways you could use that $8,100 instead of tapping it, um, if, if you did get the COVID funds, how could you use that?
We have quite a bit of money aside for our scanner for the jail.
Okay.
Our body scanner, but there is enough money to cover both of these items.
The courts are contributing. How much money it is?
That'd be zero.
German fired up today.
Frank, it's like remodeling.
Got it, no.
Well, I was going to say, I, I would certainly make a motion to approve the request. Um, my only addition on there would be, um, if possible, to use the federal, um, COVID, I don't even, Recovery Act dollars to do that. I think we need to get it now, but to see if it could be reimbursed with those dollars.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same.
Thank you.
Motion carried, and we also have a next item is a um, proclamation for Correctional Officers Week. And then sheriffs just sat down here.
Yes, we hope you recognize that the first week of May for every year is National Corrections Officer Week, and we have this proclamation. We were hoping that you would uh, read and agree and sign for us to post in our facility. We're very fortunate to have the staff we have over there. They've been amazing, and we're truly lucky to have them all.
I'd also like to echo that, that uh,
Mic on.
Yes, it is, I believe, yep. I'd also like to echo that as well, and I think it's very important that we recognize them, especially over the past year and working through the pandemic. They've had to overcome a lot. Um, everything was changing daily within the, within the correctional setting. There's a lot of policies that had to change day by day by day, and they were able to overcome each and every one of those. And they've done a fantastic job in there by uh, making sure we have not had any type of COVID cases within um, our correctional setting, and we haven't had.
Repeat that again, because that's a big issue. Say it again so people can hear that.
They've done a fantastic job because we haven't had any COVID cases within the correctional facility where we haven't had to shut any pods or anything like that down. So we're very fortunate to have the staff that we do have there.
Very good, pretty impressive.
It is.
Uh, okay, so we have a proclamation here, and um, I think what we've asked to do is, I think we're each going to read a little bit of this, and we'll start maybe with Steve, if you would like to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, whereas correctional officers have the difficult and often dangerous assignment of ensuring the custody, safety, and well-being of those in the correctional facility, and.
Whereas the duties of these officers have become increasingly complex and demanding, and.
Whereas they are called upon to fill simultaneously custodial, supervisory, and counseling roles, and.
Whereas the professionalism, dedication, and courage exhibited by these officers throughout the performance of these demanding and often conflicting roles deserve our utmost respect, and.
And whereas the important work of correctional officers often does not receive the recognition from the public it deserves, and.
Whereas it is appropriate that we honor the many contributions and accomplishments of these men and women who are vital, a vital component of the field of corrections. Therefore, be it resolved in recognition of the contributions of correctional officers to our community, the Clay County Board hereby designates the first week of May 2021 as National Correctional Officers Week, adopted this 27th day of April 2021. Is there a motion to move that proclamation?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Everybody wanted to second that one, so.
Thank you so much.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same. Motion carried, and um, go back there and give them our thanks for their excellent work.
Will do. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Julie, come back and see us again before your final day.
I plan to.
All right, next we have Darren. Um, we have a couple of deals that have gone through our PIC committee. And the first one is the discussion regarding the COVID sick leave.
Yeah, and I do have a uh, quick handout for you. Hey, well, thank you for having me. Um, we had a PIC meeting last weekend, or last weekend, last Tuesday, seemed like the weekend. And it was regarding the extending the COVID sick leave. And as a reminder that this federal, it was a federal program that ended on December 30th, 2020. And then the board extended it uh, until March 30th, 2021, and then I came back and we extended it one more month to April 30th, 2021. And so um, those charts that I handed out outline the uh, start to finish as of last Friday of the total wages that have been paid out under this COVID sick leave and the, the pay, pay periods that that was paid out. And then on the back is also the number of COVID hours that the county has used since the inception back in April of 2020. So just to give you an idea of, of the dollar amount and the hours that has been used for this COVID sick leave. Since its inception of April 2020, we've had 267 requests um, for either isolation or quarantine. Of course, uh, some of those were able to work from home, so they were just normal work hours. And then some of them were not. They had up to use, they could use up to 80 hours during that time for the COVID sick leave. Um, the jump in the chart was due to one department in the, in the beginning of April. But right now, we have uh, no cases and no employees out for COVID sick leave, which is a good thing. One of the reasons that the PIC is recommending that we end the program on April 30th is that vaccinations have become more prevalent, that people can get vaccinated now. And as you know, uh, from Kathy's briefing, that more and more people are getting vaccinated every day. If somebody does uh, require a sick leave, they do still have their personal sick leave that they can use um, if they do come down with COVID or have to be quarantined or isolated uh, going forward after uh, April 30th. And also, the Personnel Issues Committee talked about if we do start seeing a spike in cases where we see a lot more employees starting to go out because of this, then we can also, also always readjust and, and look to see if we want to re-implement that COVID sick leave. Right now, um, there was a uh, question out to the HR channels and uh, not scientific, but from all the responses that I got, it looks like about probably two-thirds of the counties have, have discontinued the COVID sick leave. Uh, we're one of the minority that have continued it through April. So with that being said, I'm open for any questions.
Well, certainly it was um, the recommendation of PIC to um, end that uh, program April 30th. And I, and again, I think it's um, it's, it's pretty clear that the COVID vaccine does reduce illness and amount of time away and, and, you know.
Another note is that a lot of our employees have already been vaccinated, all of our emergency responders, our juvenile detention counselors, our correctional officers, our, our security, so. And then, um, everybody that has the opportunity to go get a vaccination now was one of the reasons that we said that April 30th would probably be a good cutoff date for them.
Have we, uh, one, one thing that I did not ask during our PIC meeting, do we have any um, any information regarding absenteeism from work as a result of the COVID shot?
Um, you know, I, I ran that, those stats a couple of weeks ago, and I compared the 2019 sick leave with the 2020 sick leave, just normal sick leave that people have taken. And actually, the results were not that far off. I can't remember the exact numbers of them, but I was pretty surprised that the 2019 sick leave used and the 2020 sick leave used were just a couple of thousand hours off. When you're, when you're looking at 600 and some employees, that's pretty, pretty miniscule in differences. Now, that doesn't include the, the COVID sick leave that would have been added on to that, but that was just personal sick leave.
Commissioner Mojo.
I guess with Darren.
Go ahead, Commissioner Gross, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to make a motion because what Darren has described is pretty much what we did discuss at the PIC meeting, and uh, through all quarters, I'd make a motion to approve this, but if you.
I'll second your motion, just had discussion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo, and we have a question.
I think part of what goes into this is, is now that the vaccination is available to all the age groups, it, it certainly makes it um, makes us rationalize why we're doing this. You know, I, I think people will continue to get sick. Uh, there are people that choose not to get the influenza vaccine, and then they get sick, but there's not a, a program paying for that sick time. And I think as we move into this new normal post-COVID, it certainly um, seems to make the most sense. I know there are um, you know, different entities that are requiring uh, employees to get the vaccine. I think our, our standpoint still remains that we just highly recommend it, but I think this is just another step to allow us to uh, move, move past what the last year has been.
And I, I would like to add too that um, and Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when our staff, if they have to take time to run over to get the vaccine, we don't count that against their, against their time, right?
Yeah, that, that's correct.
Okay. All right, so we have a, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. That program will end April 30th.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a request to return into in-person employment. Administrator Stephen Larson.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Again, this came out of our, our PIC committee at the end of, uh, the end of the month here. Uh, as you certainly are well aware, over the last, uh, last year, Governor Walz has, has provided a series of executive orders uh, to address the pandemic, uh, COVID pand- pandemic. On March 11th of last year, uh, Governor Walz issued Executive Order 2020, uh, which, uh, which stated that employees that could work from home were, were required to do so or must do so. Uh, if you recall back then, and like many counties in the state, we did not have a work remote policy. And so our PIC committee worked closely with the IT department to establish what we considered a temporary framework to comply with the remote work, uh, and the executive order. Of course, little did we know at that point that we'd be talking about a year rather than just a, a few weeks. Minnesota remained under this executive order until March 12th of this year, at which time Governor Walz signed Executive Order 20-11. And at that point, he removed the must-work-from-home and replaced it with strongly recommended uh, and set a date of April, essentially April 15th at midnight, uh, that employees, that that would take, go into play. I think from the beginning of this pandemic, this board has taken the, the COVID pandemic extremely seriously, ensuring that our citizens and, and our employees were safe um, to conduct business here was your top priority. I think in, in looking back over the last year, uh, you, you have implemented a series of mitigating actions to limit that spread. Identifying a safely returning-to-work policy, uh, which we, we worked with Kathy McKay, our Public Health Director. Uh, we had screenings of, of our citizens when they came in to do, uh, to do a business. Uh, we had, we encouraged our employees again to stay home when they weren't feeling well. Uh, we had hand sanitizers added throughout our campus and also encouraged hand washing. Uh, we have the use of masks, masks in the county facilities and highly required when social distancing was not possible. We have had additional cleaning by custodial maintenance and SDS staff over the last year in sanitizing our, our facilities. And in those tough challenges at different times where we've seen spikes, this board made the decision to either limit access or, or close the campus buildings for short periods of time. We've also seen over the last year through CARES funding that uh, we were, we were allowed to uh, make some adjustments to some of our buildings. The, the DMV, uh, and our government's, government center, we have individual windows, uh, permanent, uh, permanent protection between the, the citizens and staff, adequate social distancing uh, in each of those areas. We've got a touchless fixtures. Uh, we've had tech, technology infrastructures to allow to work remotely, and this room is an example of some of that technology that we utilize so citizens could continue to take part in their government through either in-person, through social distancing, or also electronic means. Uh, and so that allowed the board meetings to continue here, our Planning Commission, the Board of Adjustments, and Truth and Taxation. So on Executive Order 21-11, um, provided, if you recall, that we had a, kind of a small spike here in Clay County at that time when the executive order came out in conferring with Kathy McKay. I was determined that that was not the right time to make the motion that you have before you this morning. Uh, the PIC met again, uh, here on March 30th. Uh, we reviewed the executive order, uh, the, the safety mitigation plans, which, which we just discussed. Uh, we uh, saw a decline in the active COVID rates. And again, as Darren mentioned, the previous, uh, previous item, we've had an increase in the access to the vaccination. And so for all of those reasons, the PIC committee is recommending that all of our employees return to work by uh, June 1st of 2021. Uh, I would note that a significant number of our employees have already returned. Uh, we have, of course, law enforcement, our correctional officers, juvenile center staff and detox uh, staff that have not had the ability to, to work remotely during this process. Our service-related departments have already been back in person for a number of months. Uh, and so the total number of staff that we have off, not working, um, or working remotely or intermittently is about 119, of which 115 of those are social services and public health staff who are operating under, under state waivers or emergency declarations. And so with that, I would yield for any questions.
Yeah, I um, I, I do want to mention, I know Steve, you're probably going to talk about this a little bit later too, but uh, one of the, one of the things we, we had significant conversations about was what our future workforce is going to look like. And I, and I, I think you're going to go there, but I think we're looking at having a combined meeting with all of our commissioners, our supervisors, and our department heads to um, collectively look at. look at, at, in the future, what might be appropriate work from home and what isn't. So, so that conversation is still going to come. One thing we've learned from COVID is that there is, there is possibilities for, depending on your position, that there's, it makes sense to work from home rather than put demands on additional facilities. So, so we're gonna still have that conversation with, with our department heads and supervisors, and that's coming soon, right?
Yeah, the recommendation or the request before this board today would be looking at May 25, after a board meeting, to meet that afternoon, to, to look at post-pandemic, what post-pandemic business will look like here at the county, and part, portion of that would be the remote work policy.
All right, so we're, the PIC committee was recommending then that we adopt a back-to-work policy by June 1st.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I, there's different signage throughout the county based on limiting access. I know that the announcements on the webpage still says that we're limiting public access. Let's make sure and review all of the outlets to make sure that they're aligned with what our guidance is.
And I, that's a really good point. I, the one thing that, that we did not really get into a lot of discussion of is, is from the public standpoint about, is it still gonna be by appointment only? We haven't, we didn't have that discussion yet. I, you know, I think we need to get our people back, and, and in the meantime, whatever, whatever that process had been, we probably should continue it until we have further chance to make recommendations on that regard, so.
Well, is it appointment only? I don't think it is.
So, Mr. Chair, you, you have made the decision of the new government facility that they do not need an appointment at their family service center. They're still.
It's still, it's still by appointment at the family service center. And so that's where we still have to have that conversation. We want to make sure it's still safe for everybody, so. And we can have that conversation through PIC again too, in the near future, Darren?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the request then is to.
And also move that we do have our employees return to work by June 1st.
Motion by Commissioner Gross.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, in-person work, because they have been working.
Yeah, in-person.
And, and we would, I would also note from a, for a commissioner's standpoint, that a number of weeks ago, we did begin to have discussions with our, with our department heads, in going to the staff to notifying that at some point, not knowing the date, at some point, that, that we would be coming back to work in person. So we, this is not, shouldn't be the first time that our employees are hearing about this today.
And I, I think for everybody's awareness, that our board, through our administrator and through our Human Resources Department, we will be monitoring this whole process and making sure that all of our employees and our citizens who've come before us are gonna be as safe as we possibly can be. So just keep that in mind, that we'll always be watching that, so. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. All right. Next, we have discussion for the capital planning, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair Commissioners. I think over the last seven to eight months, in conjunction with a number of changes at the county facility, the county facilities have been brought about by the pandemic, our, our building committee and this board has been working with, with Joe Olson, our facilities director, on a number of projects. In addition, Joe has brought forward a, his annual update of the county facility capital infrastructure, infrastructure schedule, with there being some additional needs of remodeling of the courthouse, in accordance with our departments moving to, to the government center, and also the increased needs of court administration, the courts, and, and moving probation into the courthouse. This board approved Joe to utilize funds from his Fund 19 capital item plan to cover the remodel here earlier this year with, within the, within the courthouse. But he also has indicated through his capital plan that he has some, some critical needs that will need to be met over the next one, next year. Over the last number of months, this board has openly spoke about bonding as a possibility, taking advantage of the low interest rates. And having said that, we've never taken any official action on what the board's wishes would be. And so this morning, we have a number of, a number of things coming up in the very near future, as, as early as right after this item potentially, of some needs that we have, and in order to do that, we would need to, to make a decision on, on bonding, so.
So if I, if I can, for the rest of the board, are, we've, we've discussed this at, at length, and at our last meeting, you were all given a presentation on, on what our needs might look like through 2028. We're, we're certainly not at the point where, where we want to ask for a final amount of a bonding bill. However, what's before us today are a couple of critical things that the longer we delay, the more expensive it gets with, for example, steel, for steel buildings right now, and the need for Joe from a timing standpoint to have certain things done by fall for, before the next cold weather hits. So those couple of things, so what we're, basically, we're looking for right now is, is a consensus that yes, we will do some sort of a bonding bill. And, but for right now, what we're asking for is that these critical components will be part of that bonding bill. The others are still up for debate and discussion. So the final dollar amount that we're looking for, we're not, we're not expecting anybody or any board to, for example, approve the whole 4.8 million that was proposed, so. But these critical components, if we don't come to a consensus on that now, those dollar amounts, I mean, we're gonna probably hear after the break, Joe's done some incredible work on this, and, and just seeing how things have escalated just in the last month or two in prices. So if we can, if we can kind of agree on that, that would be helpful, then we can move forward.
I think, for example, yesterday, we were in our resource recovery meeting, and the construction engineer shared that their rebar, you, you get a quote for two days, and, and prices are moving that, that quickly, and so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, yeah.
Just, just for clarification, what you need now is, is not a vote or not a motion, but simply a consensus that.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I think what, what our building committee wants to be sure of is that it is our intention at some point in time to do a capital improvement bond. I think that's kind of really where, where we're at right now, with what we'd like the board to say, yes, we will do, but within that process, tho- those particular line items that were, that's listed on Attachment J, right, down below on the cost and impact and the funding source, those are thing, those are just a couple of the items where we, we don't feel we can wait from a, from a cost standpoint to, to move forward on. So we're kind of asking for a commitment to do those projects, and with the idea in mind that it's gonna, it's gonna be paid for with the bond that would come in at the same time as the bond for our transfer station. Okay, so we're, and we won't know, we won't have a recommendation on a total bond until late May or early June. So, but just to, that's, that's why it's important, we can't wait for what the prices are going, we can't wait to do that, so that's what we're looking for.
I think there's some items come from the highway department also, so I don't know if you included that or not, but, I mean, like it was, like you said, we can't say how much money we needed in this bond yet, but we have to move forward to this project that could go in. So I don't know, if you need a motion on it, I'll make that motion, that we move ahead with the projects that Joe asked to get going on it, that we would make a commitment to have a bonding bill later on this year.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Commissioner Mojo.
Just a clarification that, you know, you know, I, it looks as though that this is going to be spending a significant amount of money, but the reality is, the projects that we were able to do through bonding for the highway department were projects that needed to happen years ago and saved our citizens a substantial amount of dollars. And certainly, it is our responsibility to address the needs of the infrastructure of the county in the most fiscally conservative way, and it's the board's opinion that this is the best way to do that while not incurring enormous spikes on our tax levies.
Very good, very good comments. And, and these things that we're approving through this motion also will require, you'll come back with RFPs, right, Joe? Okay, Commissioner Kaylee.
So for the time being, this will be paid out of one of your funds, Joe, and then that will be reimbursed when we do bonding?
Wait, correct, we actually, we spoke with Lori Johnson, and she's indicated, I'm not sure exactly what fund, but she has some funds that are gonna cover that.
What, what will probably happen, and I'm glad you raised that question, because I, I think it's important that, that the record shows that this is intended to be part of our capital improvement project, which can be reimbursed with the bonds. I think that's an important thing that we need to, Colleen, maybe you can note in the minutes that that's our intent here. Yes, so, yeah, that was a good, good point raised. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. We're gonna take like a three-minute break before we get back into this next part. Back in session, and before, before we begin this, we, I do want to make a, a comment, and our commission has been following activities that happened this weekend in Moorhead with a mosque and, and some hateful things that were done on some property, and we just want the public to know that we, as a commission, do not tolerate that type of behavior. And we put out a statement, and I guess I would like, Commissioner Mojo's got it handy, and I would like her to read that, that statement on behalf of our board.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Hate has no home here. During the early hours of April 25, the Moorhead Fargo Islamic Community Center located at 2215 12th Avenue South in Moorhead, Minnesota was vandalized. Messages of hate were spray painted on the exterior of the building. The Moorhead Police Department is investigating in conjunction with the Federal Bureau of Investigations. The Clay County Board of Commissioners condemns the criminal actions taken against the Moorhead Fargo Islamic Center. The Fargo-Moorhead region, specifically Clay County, values diversity, acceptance, and tolerance. Hate in any form is unacceptable and must not be tolerated. The Clay County Board of Commissioners asks our citizens to stand up against all hate, bias, violence, and discrimination in our community. Anyone with information that could assist the investigators, please call the Red River Dispatch Center at 701-451-7660, and ask to speak with the on-duty Moorhead Police Service Supervisor, or please submit any information to the Moorhead Police Department tip line. Those contact numbers are also on our Clay County webpage. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mojo, for reading that, and I, I would like to also thank all those who were able to be there yesterday from the public standpoint in helping to clean all of that mess up that was, that certainly was a criminal action that took place. And I know some of us would have liked to be there, but we were, we were, had commitments to be in committee meetings here, and I believe, Commissioner Kaylee, you were able to, to be there yesterday for that?
Sure, absolutely.
Yes, I was able to be there, I was very blessed to be there. This was, it looks like one person or very few people that committed this act of hate, and hundreds of people showed up to clean. And I think that's more of a statement about our community and the love that we have for each other, the acceptance that we have for each other, and the unity that we hope to build as a community. So our hearts go out to our Islamic neighbors. This is Ramadan, and during this time, they are seeking to build a better heart for their neighbors through fasting and prayer. And I was glad that we showed up in big numbers to show them our love. So thank you again to everybody who came.
All right, Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, I, I still consider myself sometimes a new member of this community. I've only been here 15 years now. I came up in a very different environment, and when I came here, I was accepted, but, you know, that wasn't a hard transition for people to make. We have people in this community who have suffered greatly, their families have suffered greatly, and they've come here because of the promise that a community like Moorhead in America offers them. And once again, I'm so proud of what the people in this community have done with their treasure, their time. They've stepped up and they've let our immigrants know that they are, they're part of our community, they're our neighbors, and that's how we view them. This isolated hateful individual or individuals that did this need to be held accountable, but I think it's worth noting what the, what the members of that mosque have said. I want to talk to them. They want to, want him to understand who they are. That kind of outreach shows what kind of neighbors we've got coming in, and they're welcome, and I'm proud to have in our community. And again, just to reiterate, the Moorhead Police Department has got a responsibility right now to investigate this, and I know they are fervent in doing that job and doing it well. As a community member, if you know something, if you suspect something, call the dispatch center and speak to a Moorhead supervisor. You know, it's, it's incumbent on all of us to cooperate, keep this a safe community for us and our neighbors. So please, if you know something, give consideration of coming forward with it. Thanks.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, we'll go back to our, our next agenda item, and I think, Joe, I think, item number 10, we, we kind of did that in.
Yeah.
Just before the break, I kind of jumped the gun a little bit with what Steve was talking about and what you're doing there. But maybe, maybe what we could do is, is just clarify those, those items that, that you want to move forward with now.
Yep, I can do that.
So we have it in the record?
Yes, so just, just to, yeah, just to clarify the, the four different projects that I have on this, this memo today. One project has already gone ahead and is down, it's a construction downstairs slated to be done June 1st around that timeline. That's the court's fit-up project is what it's called. And then the three other projects that, that I'm gonna be coming back to you, and I'll, I'll bring it to the board or to the committee first with, with what the quotes and the costs are, and then ultimately to the board. But the storage facility project, we're working on designing that and figuring out what the cost is, that's definitely gonna be in a request for proposal type situation there. And then the heat pump tower replacement project and fuel oil tank that we need to replace. So those, just, I, I plan on bringing the, the exact numbers on, on definitely the fuel oil tank, and then the heat pump towers, I think we're coming down on some price, I got an initial quote back this morning, so I, I gotta go through it, but I plan on coming back to you with all three of these individual items here. So that's kind of was my role today to clarify that a little more.
And I, I think based on the action of the motion that we had earlier, we talked about those being included, so I don't know that we have to have another motion for it. To, we do anticipate you'll be coming back with those requests for proposals.
Correct, yep.
So I think you're good to go.
Yep, okay.
Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to highway people. We have our county attorney here regarding the first item. This is something we don't do very often.
Right.
So Dave, do you want to start the discussion?
Right, in the 20 years I've been here, this is only the second time we've ever had to do this. And we feel it necessary that the additional right of way is needed in order to reconstruct county state aid highway one. It's already been delayed. This will be the second summer that it's been delayed due to the acquisition. If we could have only resurfaced the roadway that's there without widening it, we would have because it would have saved the county a lot of dollars. But it just does not meet the design standards. It has to be widened and in order to widen it, you've got to grade it and in order to grade it, the ditches push out just a little bit. So, you know, we only acquire very, very minimal amount of right of way. Justin and I talked quite a bit because we both hunt and we've both been south in the area like south of Castleton. There's an area out there that has a ditch right of way of probably over 100 feet. It's like a ginormous amount of right of way and it's, it's somewhat common practice in North Dakota to acquire bigger swaths of right of way. But since I've been at Clay County, we just barely have, we don't even usually have a right of way to stockpile topsoil outside of the construction limits. So I mean, we, we, you know, the land here is very valuable and it's very important to the folks that own the land. So our practice has been to have a very minimum acquisition and additional use for roads. So we have, maybe Justin can give just a little update on how many parcels there was and kind of where we were at and how we got here.
Yeah, so there was 19 parcels along the two mile stretch of road. And as of today, we have acquired seven, well, 16 of the 19 parcels have been acquired. And we're looking to acquire the three more that we're bringing forward today.
Can you, can you please for the rest of the board, provide them with some sort of level of how many, how many different negotiations you've had with these property owners? Think it's important to, for the board to know that, that this has been something that's been going on for quite some time. And it's my understanding that, that the dispute is, is over the valuation. Is that correct, Brian? Is that?
I think, and Justin could probably even fill it in more, but as I think, Mr. Chair, you started off by saying, I mean, this is something we do very limited in nature. I don't think we've had a condemnation action since 2003. Was the only other time since I've been here that I know of it, so it's utilized rarely. I know that besides Justin's, you probably enumerate how many times he's talked to these different individuals. But there's been official letters coming from the highway department as well as directly from the county attorney's office informing them of the, the process and the action that would be, be happening. And so the last letter that came from me gave them a final 60 days to look at and determine whether they want to look at the assessment that's been completed and that the other 17 individuals or or landowners utilized. And actually, we got down to really four that were left. Two, I think ultimately came to do it and now we have two that are left here with resolutions. I might need to talk to Justin when he was talking about three. I'm not sure if one maybe fell away, but today in front of you have two resolutions, two landowners. One from Carl and Julie Goring and one from Benjamin and Samantha Johns before you. And so the condemnation action is a, it's a combination of both an action between or in front of the board as well as court action. So what will happen is we'll be asking you to adopt these two resolutions today. After that adoption goes forward or with that adoption, that initial resolution, then I'll file a petition with the court. There will be a court proceeding that will move forward that will really just evaluate the fact that the the fixing of the county state aid highway one and the work that we're doing there is a necessity. It is a public, it is for a public purpose and an important public purpose. That's really all the court is confirming, but there's some testimony that goes into that. Once that's done and the court has confirmed that, it actually then comes back to this board and there will be a actual full hearing that would come before this board where the landowners would have the opportunity to come before you, make their pitch of what they want or don't want, whether it's not losing the land whatsoever or if it's a dispute in regard to cost. And that's something that you would ultimately have to decide as a body and make findings. And we'll work through that at a later point after we get through the process down the road. I would expect the, after this resolution goes forward and we file with court, it's probably somewhere within 60 to 90 days at a minimum that the court would take to get this on its schedule. We would have the hearing, we'd have to make findings. So it's, it's a process that will move forward, but it'll ultimately come back before this board as an actual deciding body in regard to the actual condemnation action. So again, it's not something that we do very often. I don't think anyone here besides maybe Commissioner Campbell, Mr. Chair, has even gone through it before.
It was my first year on this board.
I think it's probably my very first year, right? So, but it's something that we believe is, is necessary as Dave's already outlined. This has been a two year project. We've been waiting to get done. There's really two landowners left that are holding out and and we see this as the only action to move forward is through condemnation.
And the, even though these resolutions would be done, there, there can still be discussions taking place and negotiations with the, with the landowners. Is that correct?
Sure, I mean, they could go all the way up through the time that, I mean, even once we file a petition and we're waiting to go through court, they could choose to, to discuss with us and
I mean, if it's, if it's to the point where a landowner just simply doesn't want their land to be gone, it's, that's pretty hard negotiation to get around. But if
Right.
If it's, if it's more about valuation, you know, I, I think it's important to keep us informed as to what's going on there and you know, I mean, we've, we've, we've had to acquire other properties in the past and we have to be careful there, but we also have some, some sort of leeway. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, just a question, just to clarify reading this, is your strips of land that are 12 feet wide?
Correct.
Do you have a map? Okay. All right, he did ask the question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify, this is simply to extend the highway.
Just
We're talking 55 feet long, 12 feet wide.
Yep.
Okay. We're not
So
we're not taking agricultural land and
Mm-mm.
we're splitting somebody's property up or cutting off the roads.
No. What, what happens while he's pulling up, when a, an older road like that is reconstructed, it, it, it probably had slopes before that wouldn't be considered safe today. And so the, the whole reason behind it is to redo it and regrade it with the proper safer slopes, which then requires the addition of, of the additional land needed. Is that kind of a good?
Couple more feet of top, on the top that would, that would match the standards for the monotraffic. And then a little bit flatter in slopes and then everything pushes out just a little bit, that 12 feet.
So it's a road improvement on the land, on the, to the road that goes this, these people's property?
Right.
Okay.
Well, and, and it's also a county stated highway that's used by an awful lot of people, both county residents and, and non-residents all using it.
Cars a day on this road.
Yeah.
So there is a fairly detailed process, federal?
There's a fairly detailed federal right of way process that's followed. Very first thing we do is we get an appraisal. We, the appraiser actually gives opportunity to meet out on site and then he does the appraisal up and then we start the negotiations. At that time when we make the offer to them, by law, they've got 30 days in order to, you know, give a yay or an a or, you know, agree or not. And, you know, we're basically two years beyond that 30 days. We've had, you know, we've had additional communication with them, sent letters. We've met with several of them. It's to a point where the, I think what Justin was, yeah, there's two homeowners, two landowners left and three parcels. One of them has two parcels. And there are some things going back and forth a little bit about prices and valuations. One of the landowners, for one reason or another, we have the communications just stopped. They don't live in, in our area and for some reason the communication's kind of just stopped. The other landowner, I think he's got some issues with the, kind of the project in general and maybe future development that he has that he wanted to negotiate for a parcel that was a flood buyout that we just couldn't do according to laws on the, on the flood acquisition that we had. So I don't, if there was additional things we could try to work with them on, like county attorney mentioned, we did get two parts, two landowners signed just last week. And one of them was down to, we jockeyed and approached around so that they have a little better access, which is very common. Sometimes there's tree issues, sometimes there's fence issues and, and we work with those. I'm not aware of anything right now that we can try to work with them on as we'd like to. If it comes up, we certainly would work with them on it, but as of now, I don't believe we know of any.
No, and the one, the one landowner wasn't agreement and had our, had us change our permanent highway easement a little bit. And she had gotten married since we last had her contact information, so we changed that. And since then, we've written letters, we've tried to call, left voicemails and emails and just haven't gotten a response.
Okay, Commissioner Kaylee.
Can you just like use your cursor and like
Yep.
point out the area that we're talking about?
So the, the parcels that are, would it be 20 Carl and Julie Goring would be this parcel here, this parcel here, and then this alfalfa field here.
And that is just north of 70th Avenue?
Yep.
Is that correct?
So county stated highway 22 is right here, which is 70th Avenue.
20.
No. Sorry, 20.
Oh. 70th Avenue used to be county 93.
Yep, now it's county state aid 20.
Yeah, okay, yeah, right. Not to be confused
Yep.
Wall Street.
And the project would start right here.
Do you want to go to the other parcel?
And the other parcel is this one right here.
So it's, it's pretty, you know, it's pretty wide open. You can see there's farmland. There is some scattered home sites along, along the property. You know, and the, the Red River is literally quarter mile or so to the west of the, of the roadway. We, we have negotiated with the landowners on the north side. There was some alfalfa there. So there was some crop damage that was paid for additional years, which is our practice. If, if we're get a temporary easement, we give two years worth crop damage because we figure their alfalfa is going to be damaged for that time. We pay for seed because if the alfalfa doesn't come back, they have to reseed it. So we've done, you know, we tried to do things that are, they requested, they bring up that makes sense and it's kind of standard of what we do.
And I, this happens to be up in my district and some of those landowners that before they did sign, I guess they had a request. I did go up and meet with some that wanted, that requested to have me go up and, and talk with them. And, and we talked through the process about the appraisal system and, and how that works. And, and I know there was, there was one landowner who, who felt that he, he was giving comparisons to land over in Cass County, which was something a little bit different. He wasn't really comparing apples to apples type of thing. But he, you know, I think he, he understood what our guidelines are and, and, you know, we have to be careful when we're dealing with taxpayer money too and, and that when we have to buy these things, we
If they don't feel like their appraisal is fair, we do give up to $1,500 towards the new appraisal.
Right, right. And they have an opportunity to get their own appraisal done as well. And I, I have mentioned that. It was unfortunate in this one instance where we probably, we probably could have come to some sort of agreement, but like Dave said, there was, there was a parcel of land that he wanted in a, in a trade. But because it was, it was flood money that was used through the state of Minnesota, through the hazard mitigation program, it's not allowed to be transferred. And so, so that's kind of, as much as he wanted that, we, we don't have the ability or the right to, to offer that trade. So I just, you know, I think we need to move on here. I think we have two resolutions that are being requested. I think we should probably act on these resolutions with, with the idea in mind that, that you know, Dave and Justin and the, and those will still continue to work with these landowners to try to resolve it short of having to have a public hearing and, and a contest that way. So Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. I am just a little confused just because I haven't been in the committee level. You're looking for additional right of way on the west side of one, is that correct?
Actually, I'm on both sides.
Both sides, but these particular, both of these parcels are on the west side. We have acquired everything that we need to on the east side of.
Okay, so you
Both sides needed
Correct.
additional, both sides of highway one needed.
Additional right of way.
So in between 70th and 80th, you've basically, or 70th and 90th Avenue, you've basically worked on all of the agreements and come to agreements on all of them except for these three parcels to owners. Thank you.
So we are looking at the, for adoption of both resolutions, obviously separate motions we would look for. 21 dash 22 and 2021 dash 23.
Commissioner Mojo, you have
My final question would be then in terms of, of drainage and discussion, the Buffalo Red aware of the additional right of way being acquired?
Correct.
Thank you.
Because we, as part of the project, we are also replacing the bridge just south of 26 there. We've been in discussion with the Buffalo Red River watershed with permits on that and just the project in general.
It's the board's wishes.
I'll make a
Okay.
I was going to say, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2021 dash 22.
And I'll second that because I think we put this project off, it's our second year already. I think we moved, got to move ahead on it.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Gross, resolution 2021 dash 22. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same motion carried. Next, we have a, a request to adopt resolution 2021 dash 23 for the same purpose.
I'll move. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebbinghaus. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. All right, so Dave, thank you, Brian. Dave, if we can, on your other items, can we kind of pick up some time?
I just wanted to comment really quick on the last ones that we did. You know, I know that, that we have flood land or bonding, land purchased with bonding dollars that we're not flexible on. There still is some county owned property that we have more flexibility on in terms of negotiating with landowners going forward that might be available. I know it's not, the location is probably not where they
This particular one was landlocked is the reason that he had interest in it.
Thank you.
All right, so if we can kind of work through these other items, I, I hate to put you under the gun here, but
Sure, no problem.
we're kind of up against the clock with some other meetings that have to happen on time. So let's do your agenda item A, request to approve replacement unit 102.
Did everybody get an updated abstract? I was able to meet with the governmental representative from Nelson Auto Center. She's been gone on vacation, so up until just yesterday, I wasn't able to completely dial things in with her. We were able to remove some of the confusion on some options there, save the county a little money. The new quoted price is $32,712.73. This would be for replacing a 2015 Ford Explorer. We show salvage value on there, but it would actually be turned down to building maintenance. It'll replace one of the older vehicles that Joe has in his fleet and I believe that vehicle then will be sold. The dollar amount that we got as an actual trade number from Nelson is 12,400. And I believe Joe does have internal service dollars that would kind of be transferred to the highway department for the replacement there. This would be for a 2021 F-150 pickup. It's the assistant engineer's vehicle. The main focus on our assistant engineer is for construction management, so he's out on the construction jobs. And most of the people in that position do have pickups, I guess. We have, we haven't previously had one, but I, I guess I see no reason why. Uh, we have, we haven't previously had one, but I, I guess I see no reason why having a pickup wouldn't be good. Then the other thing would be is it could be handed down to one of the outlying shops after the, um, service life for the vehicle is, is in place. And that's something that we commonly do. Uh, we went from regular cab, two-wheel-drive pickups to four-wheel drives to, you know, trying to get something a little better for the outlying shop so that they can check codes. You know, we've got six outlying shops, so, this is kind of the, maybe the long-term plan for this vehicle.
Commissioner Mojo has a question.
Miss, uh, no, just, uh, a motion. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, um, unit number one oh two purchased from Nelson Auto for the quoted price of thirty-two thousand, seven, twelve, seventy-three.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kaylee, and just, um, note that this, uh, was recommend, uh, recommended approval by the Highway Tracking Committee as well. Any further, uh, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. Item, agenda item number B.
Right, I, uh, I tried not to let this individual retire because he's one of our, uh, seemed like one of our top blade men. I never, ever hear any questions or comments or anything from our Georgetown-area, uh, motor grader operator, but, uh, he's been with us twenty-five years, fantastic employee, um, sad to see him go, but he is looking to retire July sixth. So I thought, being that it takes so long to, you know, for the union position, we have to post internally for ten days, and then find out, um, you know, let's say a, a maintenance worker or truck driver would move into it, then we got to actually replace that position and post that for another ten days. So it would be nice to get started on the process itself, advertising and trying to find somebody to replace.
Move to approve the decision with backfill.
Second.
Motion and a second. Uh, again, once again, recommended to approve by the Highway Tracking. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried. Agenda item C, request for additional funding for Eleventh Street Underpass.
Uh, we were requested by, uh, MINDOT as well as, it's kind of a joint project, uh, even though MINDOT's kind of the lead, but our Eleventh Street Underpass, I think you're all aware that at one time they had asked for some, uh, letters of support for their grant application when they were going, uh, to get the initial funding, and at that time, the request was for five hundred thousand dollars. After the dust settled and they're getting a little further along in design, they realized they're quite like to the tune of twenty-five million dollars short. I know MINDOT has, uh, maybe even more, like forty million dollars short. I know MINDOT has kicked in additional, uh, tens of millions of dollars. City of Morehead's had to kick in additional dollars. BNSF has had to ratchet up their funding level, and, uh, their request to us came to two million dollars. We've been just wrestling with this thing, trying to figure out how we can still deliver our current projects on our five-year plan, as well as to provide some additional funding. So I brought it back to the Highway Committee a couple of different times. We had a couple of different meetings with, uh, the City of Morehead came back in and really explained line by line where all the funding was coming from and where their shortfall was, and...
Right, the request here, um, we obviously, when we approved our five-year plan, we, that included the one point five million, and I, I think the letter is appropriate. Uh, I think the letter should, should state in there that, that the one point five is, is what we have available through our five-year, uh, construction plan. Uh, and, you know, and I, I think you mentioned that we will continue to look for the remainder, uh, uh, but that's, that would have to, would probably have to come after the five-year period comes up unless we run into, into some sort of windfall that we're, we're not expecting right now. But, but our goal will still be to, to do our best to try to help with that project, and I, I've reminded everybody that, that, uh, Eleventh Street North right up to Center Avenue is, is a county highway. It's county, it's county road, so we, we also have a commitment there too, from that standpoint, so. But I think, so, um, you're looking for, um, uh, approval to send a letter?
Correct, yep.
I think we did have discuss, I mean, we did have discussion at the, uh, Highway Tracking meeting, and as you said, it is a county road. So I make a motion that we, uh, prove to up to the one and a half million.
Second.
A motion and a second, and, and of course, there will be language in there talking about continuing to look into the future for additional funds. All right, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. Item number D.
It's kind of an unexpected expenditure, but as, uh, MINDOT's been offering, uh, some of their used equipment, come across these changeable message sign trailers. Uh, we have been kind of borrowing their trailers intermittently, uh, once or twice a year, and I think this is an excellent opportunity for the Highway Department and possibly, uh, other departments such as, let's, Sheriff's Department. If there was a, uh, location, we wanted to put these sign trailers, we could put messages on there and just let people know, and, uh, it just seems like increasing communication with some of our traveling, uh, public out there is, it just goes a long ways. They have offered these things at four thousand dollars apiece. Uh, our staff went and took a look at them. They're in excellent shape. Brand new, they cost twenty-two thousand dollars apiece, and, uh, in fact, we would immediately put these into place as, uh, we're looking at doing work on our landfill road, and with all the garbage trucks and the people that live there, and there's also gravel pits out there, we would like to put our notification on when construction would be looking at, starting, uh, there's going to be a railroad crossing coming right before our paving, so that will be a complete closure. So we just want to let people know. Basically, my biggest intent is to use them for maintenance and construction projects, letting people know. Uh, did talk to our county auditor, uh, as, even if you go back to our, uh, our unit one oh two abstract, there, there is additional, uh, internal service fund dollars that weren't fully used on this one, and, and, uh, I did get Lori's graces to use internal service dollars for this rather than, uh, trying to scrape it out of maintenance dollars and shorting that budget.
Mr. Chair? Just a clarification, uh, I think for the public, that the new cost is twenty-two thousand each if these were purchased new.
Yep.
I, I certainly feel that, uh, the more we can help, uh, with communication in our citizens, the more it streamlines, uh, public safety as well. So I would make a motion to approve the purchase of both of the used signs.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kaylee to pay eight thousand dollars for the two units. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Dave and Justin. All right, next we have request for additional staff for the Department of Motor Vehicles. You have some handouts, right? Good. Hey, uh, maybe while, while this is being passed around, um, just, just to point out that we did have an opportunity to have a pretty good discussion on this through our, our PIC meeting, and, and I, I think we've, uh, with, with the help, um, of DMV and, and, uh, Lori and our committee, I think we've got, got some options here that might be pretty good. All right, Lori.
Morning.
Good morning.
Okay, um, so I'm here to request two, uh, new positions for our motor vehicle department. As you're aware, we've been having some wait-time issues out there. What we're looking to do is to hire one full-time person and one variable hour administrative person that would be forty hours for a temporary period of time. And what that person would do is actually, right now, we're using a fully-trained, uh, per, employee to check people in. So when they're checking people in, then they're not able to, uh, do driver's license transactions and that sort of thing. So what we're proposing is that we hire an administrative person, which would need a minimal amount of training to check, check those folks in. And that would move a full-time person immediately into a window, so that would help out with that. Then also, I'd like to hire another, another full-time person, uh, that we have doing, that's a variable hour person right now, and move that to a full-time person, so that would also fill up another window. And so if you want to just, uh, take a peek at the handouts I provided, uh, the, the eight and a half by eleven, that's just a summary, a two-week summary of our wait times and transactions, uh, for the first half of April. And the top part, they're, they're the exact same data, just, you know, ones by day and ones by, uh, transaction type. Uh, so the top, if you look at, uh, all the transactions there, the average wait time is about fifty-four minutes. And we do have some high, and in each of the, in each of the areas, we do have some outlying, uh, higher wait times. But overall, the average wait time is fifty-four minutes. The average transaction time is ten minutes. And so the overall experience at motor vehicle is an hour. You know, obviously, there are some outlying, you know, transactions that take longer. Uh, just for instance, Chelsea was telling me, somebody came in for an enhanced ID. They also had a title transfer. That one transaction took an hour, just the transaction time itself. That's kind of an indication of, you know, we don't really know when people are coming in, how long each transaction's going to take. So the second, the second handout I gave you is, um, basically, the best-case scenario under our current, um, available employees, when you, when you figure in break times and vacation days, we have long-term employees out there. And so I figured if you, if everybody took their vacation and a sick, sick day here or there, every day, somebody would have to be gone, every single day, and that's at a minimum. Plus, we were, we were one employee short. So if you look in the, towards the right-hand side where it says current actual open windows, so if you figure in all the break times, best-case scenario, if there's only one person on vacation, that's the number of open windows there would be, not including the check-in window.
And that's, and you can see it's broken down by time slot.
Right, and that's broken out by time slot on the left.
Fifteen minutes.
Yep. And so what, what we've done, um, I put together some different scenarios of changing the break times, um, using only two people at once for a thirty-minute lunch, three people at once, um, three people at once for a thirty-minute lunch, and three people at once with a forty-five-minute lunch and then a fifteen-minute break after we add the two proposed employees. And you can see there would be a significant difference in open windows, so I think that would, um, really help the wait times, and with the approval of these two employees, it would be an immediate, um, result, because we would be able to move, it, the one person would be immediately, the other would need a little bit more, uh, training to be able to do all transactions. They currently would be able to do some, but not driver's license. So the response would be fairly immediate.
One of the, um, things that we talked about is, um, the demands right now, Chelsea and your staff over there too with the real ID and, and the complications of that, and, and, um, right now, the timeline is they have, that has to be done by October.
We're first, first.
So within our, uh, personal issue, we, we did, um, we did recommend that we approve this, uh, with the idea in mind that, um, certainly going through October, we, we want to make sure that, that our citizens aren't put into these wait times, um, when we, if we can open more windows and, and help in that regard with the idea in mind that it can be under review again come, um, after the real ID is done. Things might calm down a little bit. And I think then, um, um, Lori's goal then, if, if it, if it works out, then, then we could probably back off of this based on attrition, right?
Yep. If we felt we didn't need the additional full-time person, we do have some attrition coming up, so, you know, the...
Now there's, in other words, a retirement.
Right. We would, you know, a maximum of thirty thousand dollars, but probably less because the revenue's coming in. That's extremely conservative. It might be way less, could be fifteen thousand, ten thousand, depending on the revenue.
And I know Commissioner Mojo's asked these questions in the past too, because we do, um, if people can't get served here, they might go to DL, they might go to AID, or they might do it online, and in all those instances, when they do those things, we lose the revenue. You know, or, or portion of the revenue, right? Is that correct?
Um, the online renewal is to end on June thirty-first. It's not, hasn't been approved to continue, just so you know.
Really?
Got that email today.
Okay. Yeah, can you, your, is your mic green there, or? Okay, just get a little closer to you.
Like, talk when your kids aren't listening, and then you need to...
Just wanted me to repeat what I said. So we got it, we got an update today that the online renewal is to end on the thirty-first unless it's approved to continue.
Thirty-first of?
June, sorry.
Thirtieth of June.
Sorry, yes, sorry.
And I, um, so going back to our discussion and, and with doing this, our, our hope was between, um, the request and, and the possibility of adjusting the break times, um, the, the goal was to see that current column where, where in every time slot, we could see an increase of two or, or possibly three win, additional windows open during every time slot. And I think we met that goal, but I do, I, there's one little, one little issue here. There's a couple of them where we're going from seven to six, and it's like at one-thirty or, and I'm, I'm wondering why we go backwards there.
One thing I should add to this, um, we, we were short one hire when I did this, because you wanted me to bring what I brought to PIC so it would match up.
Right.
We, that person now has started, although not trained yet, so not moved to a window, but at least that person. So we could add one position to all of these, uh, when we get that person, um, up and running.
But it's still in addition to what we currently have.
Yeah, so if you look in most time slots, we're going to, with, with this, we'll have, it, it looks like at least two when additional windows open every fifteen-minute section, right? Possibly three in some cases.
Yep, yeah.
Possibly.
Where, where it gets down in that six area there.
Yeah.
That's when the check-in person goes on break, and then we have to cover from another side.
Well, this is certainly, um, I think, you know, I think this is something our citizens would really appreciate. You know, we, we've been hearing about it, you know, publicly through social media and everything, and, and this is a, a good opportunity, and, um...
Yeah, and I would, uh, want to commend everybody that works out there. They really work hard and they do a nice job. They're working nights and weekends, coming in, trying to get, uh, the dealership, uh, deals done, and so they've been working really hard, and I would invite all of you to come out there and visit for not just a few minutes, stay a couple hours, go in the back where the employ, where the employees are, and hang out for a couple hours and see exactly what's going on there.
I have to renew mine, so I'm going to do that.
All right.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Uh, Chelsea, I just want to commend and show you how much I appreciate your willingness to constantly be part of the discussion to make stuff better. You've not been a supervisor out there that long, and in that time, have really, um, taken on a lot of different challenges with a positive mindset, and so, one, I appreciate that, and two, I, you know, the folks out there are always friendly and deal with, uh, probably more citizens on a daily basis than any of us in this room combined, and are always, um, as cheerful as possible and not always met with that same enthusiasm from people. And so I think it's important to, uh, note that, but also note that we hear the concerns of the citizens. We've seen it, we've heard it, we've fielded the calls. My son's bus driver hopped off the bus last week after he finished his route to talk to me about some concerns, and so, um, I think this is a direct action from the concerns that we've heard from people. I think we also should let the people know that we, uh, remodeled the site at the Morehead Center Mall for future growth. And so just because there are X amount of windows doesn't mean that that is the intention, that there's going to be twelve or thirteen windows open, maybe in the future, and as we've seen, we've, we're trying to add staff to, to deal with that. I think, uh, it's important to know that there are citizens that have run down to Wilken County and Holly and driven north and DL, and, and so, um, these actions are addressing the needs as we see them currently, but you're right, as online availability changes, we might see more, more spikes. We are a county that is growing, and that's, that's not, um, I think that's something we all know, and so there are difficulties with that. Certainly, I would, uh, uh, support this, and I also would support, um, evaluating this in October. I am hopeful that, that, uh, the needs will change, but, uh, I don't believe that they will. I think this is going to be something that we're going to continue to need as the, the, the challenges we face continue to go. challenges we face continue to go on. So thank you for this, this really helps.
Commissioner Kaylee.
I want to thank you both for really diving in and investigating how we can solve these issues in the most fiscally responsible way possible. You've done a lot of research here, a lot of planning and mapping things out. Just wanted to say thank you for that.
Commissioner Gross.
Yeah, I don't want to take up too much more time, but we talk about people coming, going to Holly or whatever to, you know, to feel that they can get better service. But I think what we get to mention, there's people coming from other counties too.
That's right.
Coming here too because they get better service. So it's not just people leaving sometimes, there's people coming here too. So we are doing good service. And I guess when this thing first came up, I didn't realize that you guys were working on Saturdays to get caught up because I was concerned if we put on more people, we're going to see the people sitting at a window waiting for people to come up. But right now, there's plenty of work here, so good work.
I, I would like to add too, and maybe more so for the public, just a little FYI for the public, when they come in there and sit there and they might see two or three or four windows closed, that does not mean that there's nobody working behind the scenes there. Every one of us that go in there, when it comes time for your driver's license renewal, you have, you end up having to go back to another window that's kind of out of sight. And that, that staff person has to go along with that person to go take that photo. So, so sometimes there can give an appearance that, that there's windows that are closed, but they're really not closed, they're just doing other pieces of work that, that is required through DMV. So I, that's more from the public standpoint, it can give a, a false perception that, boy, there's just nobody working when in fact they're, they are doing some things behind the scenes, so. Well, I, you know, we've.
We did label the capture station yesterday, the window 13, as a capture photo station.
Okay.
Signed pro yesterday.
Okay.
And then we did switch the exit and the entrance yesterday too, which the flow seems to be working better.
Oh.
Good, very good, all right.
Okay, I would like to, after all this discussion, I would like to make a motion to hire one variable hour and one full-time in the Motor Vehicle Department.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Lori, you have, and Chelsea, you got some support coming.
Thank you very much.
Help is on the way.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Frank, would you like to start committee reports?
Sure. Tuesday after the meeting, we had a highway tracking. Pretty much everything that we discussed in the highway tracking, we discovered, we discussed during the meeting, other than the comprehensive plan, which Matt Jacobson is working on, so. After that, we had personnel issues, and again, other than, I think Kurt Cannon is looking at, and the veteran service officer is looking at making some of his positions full-time. We haven't heard from, I mean, I think they'll be coming up in the near future. The other items were discussed today. That Tuesday evening, I, I watched a two virtual meeting, the planning commission meeting, which I think, they were having me there for about three and a half hours, but it was a long meeting, a lot of discussion going on there, so I guess every, every conditional use permit was approved there that night. Then we had the building improvement committee on Wednesday. We discussed the name of, of this building. At this time, we'd planned on leaving it at the courthouse, which it is. And we talked about the lease renewals for over the family service center, talking about prices increasing, stuff like that, so. And also, there's a sound issue problem in the, in the government, new government building that we, over on 12th Avenue, we have a sound issue problem where voices are traveling through the venting system, and we have to correct that. Those were my meetings.
All right, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Last week, I virtually attended the Red Board meeting. I think it's important to see all the different projects and collaboration that's happening that, there, so I did appreciate the opportunity to attend that. As Commissioner Gross noted, we did have the Clay County Planning Commission meeting, and it, it was long, but I will say, we powered through a significant amount of public hearings in that amount of time. So there were several on mining and an asphalt batch plant that was approved. I believe that batch plant is one that will be servicing our landfill road reconstruction project, so that is good. And then had a amendment to a CUP that was issued to allow for an additional storage unit. Good, good updates there. The next day, I attended the diversion land management meeting. We had property acquisition reports and conversations on what is happening on both sides of the river as they move forward with that. That evening, I attended the CAP LP annual meeting and board meeting. We had a very in-depth update from Francie Mathis on the history of community action, the story of community action, really good information as they continue to address different needs throughout our communities. CAP LP gave years of service awards from five, 10, 15, and 20, very important. The Dennis High Camp Leadership Award was given, and also the Volunteer Extraordinary Awards given to the Steens. We have so many people in our county that continue to go above and beyond in terms of volunteerism, so we're quite lucky with that.
I attended the MCC JPA meeting last week. We had an ask for support on the Drayton Dam environmental assessment worksheet that was needed to move forward with that worksheet. I talked about three, five different appraisal reviews that are in the process, and talked about negotiation summaries on some property acquisition. I, I know that we're faced with difficult decisions every day, but I think the MCC JPA is really allowed for local folks to help negotiate with local landowners and continue to feel that it's a great opportunity for local representatives to help advocate for our citizens. And we did have land agent reports on that. Friday, I attended the legislative update from AMC, really important bills going on in the, in both the Senate and House. And I, I think that we're really making up for a lot of issues in the last year. There's just a lot happening in a quick amount of time. I believe the 17th, I think, is the last day, so I encourage you all to continue to follow your EMC portfolios on what's going on there. Yesterday, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health Board Meeting Audit Report. Went, went really well. They continue to be on, on path for good financial health there. Had a report from the Audit Committee as well, and then the Otter Tail Collaborative gave an update on an issue that has always been prevalent, but particularly because of COVID, has been an issue, is truancy and how do you address truancy? And I know that Clay County and the different school districts are addressing that as well. We talked about the program margins. They have rebounded a little bit from COVID, and are seeing healthy margins there, so that's, that's particularly of note because they did have to cut some programming areas in, in response to COVID and the pandemic. So depending on how that looks going forward, they may add those back. Talked a little bit about Minnesota legislation and public policy. They are following the House bills that our juvenile detention director, James, brought up last week. That would, that would affect how they deliver services to some of those youth in that facility. And so they are committed to continuing to offer that in whatever way is safe. And then yesterday, I had AMC extension interviews all day for the regional director for the northwest, or northeast area. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Abingor.
Okay. Wednesday, the 21st, I attended the, virtually the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC Board Meeting. Executive Director Joe Rasko covered some cybersecurity steps they've taken for the organization. We discussed virtual community tour project that's being developed. The bemorecolorful.com outfit is putting one together. We reviewed that. Also discussed strategic planning that is, currently they're looking for June and July dates to have education discussion be done in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce. I will look at issues of workforce development, branding, housing issues, and of course, leadership. Later that day, I virtually attended the Diversion Authority Public Outreach Committee meeting. We voted on a recommendation for a new logo. The vote that had been taken over the week indicated the FM area diversion would be what would be on the logo. We discussed the good coverage we had on the press conference with our senators and the North Dakota governor on, on the 9th. Also addressed the P3, P3 is in final stage. I'll expand a little on that on the, on the subsequent meetings we had. Later that day, we had the Diversion Authority Finance Committee meeting and covered the general approvals for contracts and expenditures. Counsel John Shockley covered a number of new MOUs that are being completed as we move forward into the construction portion of this. The, the, on the P3s, a technical has been completed. It was finished in March. The financial was completed last Friday, and there's going to be a special board meeting on the 13th of May to vote on the P3. Also, we're going to look at several items over the last week of May. Thursday, Commissioner Campbell and county administrator from Cass County and Steve, our own county administrator, met with some Cass County commissioners, simply discussed general items regarding governance and growth of the Red River Regional Dispatch Center, which are going to be coming up for review in the future. Later that day, I had the Diversion Authority Board Meeting. The good news on that was that the North Dakota House Bill 1431 passed. It's a bonding issue, and it'll provide $435.5 million in state funding, should be available, I think in September, for the, for the diversion construction. Again, we, we covered the P3 status that I addressed earlier, and there'll be a special board meeting again on the 13th, and Wiffy loans close on the 24th. So we're looking at an awful lot of activity the end of May. And they finally, they finalized and passed the FM diversion logo. Friday, the 23rd, I took new board member orientation for the Lake Agassia Regional Library. The director, Liz Lynch, covered structure both of the library, Lake Agassia Regional Library system, and how it works within the state, covered our budget, covered board structure, some of the legislative issues that are up this year, funding, structure and funding issues, and we reviewed the MOU. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaylee.
On the 20th, I attended the Clay County Local Advisory Council on Adult Mental Health. We've decided to go back to meeting in person, as that's just going to work better for a lot of the members of that council. On the 21st, the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County Board Meeting happened, and some items of note are, the Clay County Historical Society is collecting stories from the community about COVID-19. So if you go to their website, which is hcscconline.org/covid19, there's a form where community members can submit stories about anything that happened during the pandemic so that we can preserve some of this local history, and that will be all compiled together. Also of note, the annual meeting is coming up on May 6th at 6:00 PM. That will be online, so anybody that would like to attend that annual meeting can register On the 22nd, I met with the Kurdish American Development Organization to hear about some of the concerns of the Kurdish community. That same day, I also attended the CAP LP Board Meeting, which Commissioner Mojo already reported on, so I'll move on there. The 23rd and the 24th, I had some phone calls with Representative Markort, Senator Ekin, and Representative Keeler on the issues that James O'Donnell brought forward at our last board meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. April 20th, I had highway tracking. I think that's been, well, talked about, all of the different items that were on that agenda. The 21st, in the morning, we had a Building Improvement Committee meeting. We talked about storage building proposal, cap improvement discussion, naming, if we should change the name for this, this building, we've just decided it should just remain courthouse for now. And talked about the regional extension lease renewal and sound issues in the government center. The 21st, also that afternoon, and we had a public outreach meeting. I think the other significant deal is that there's a whole new webpage being designed, and there's a lot of, a lot of work going into that. Right after that, I had the land management meeting, which Commissioner Mojo reported on. I did want to point out that part of the, this whole legal agreement was that we'd have to have individual plans with all the cemeteries, plans and the implementation of those plans prior to the project completion. And so they continued to work on, on those different cemeteries and ways that we can accommodate some sort of agreement. Crown appraisal, is working on 550 parcels on Phase Two of the Floyd easements. So that's a, that's a huge deal that's moving forward, and they intend to visit individually with all those property owners at some point in time. So you can imagine the task involved with, with that process. They are, they are working on an educational video that would explain the process of, for the Floyd easement, and, and how those easements would be valued. So, and that'll be a probably good tool, or that'll probably be, be available online for all of those property owners who might want to question that process. They can, they'll be able to watch a video to get some insight there. Thursday, the 22nd, we had our Lake County Joint Powers Authority meeting, also known as the MCC JPA for the Diversion Authority. Commissioner Mojo kind of gave a good update on that. We did ask, there was, there was a recommendation. We did ask, there was, there was a recommendation to send a communication to our county board in regards to a few parcels, parcels that are currently, they're in negotiation, but they are not able to come to an agreement on yet that's involved with the Red River Control Structure, which is a critical piece that's very time-sensitive. And so we basically said that we will, we want the negotiations to continue and if there isn't, if we aren't able to come to some satisfactory agreement on those by the 25th of May, that there will be a recommend, or a letter will be, a recommendation will come to this board to intervene, to help get it resolved. That afternoon, then after that, we had the diversion authority meeting and under the general counsel, we received technical proposals. The financial proposals were received on April 23rd. I think you, you reported on that. We do have a special board meeting on May 13th and we anticipated that the, May 27th will be when the Wiffy loan will, agreement will be finalized. And also coming up very shortly will be the selection of the P3 proposer. And the Red River Inlet Structure, if those of you have been around there, that is now 48% complete and the Wild Rise Control Structure is 25% complete. That concludes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I attended both the highway tracking and PIC committee meetings that have been addressed by Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Gross. On the 21st, I attended county management. We heard an update from Kathy, talked about some government center updates moving forward. That afternoon, I met with the building committee that had been addressed by Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Campbell. On the 21st, I also met with Rhonda Porter on a series of different issues within social services. On the 22nd, I did participate in the discussion and operations of the Red River Dispatch Center with Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Abiger. And also that afternoon, attended the MCC JPA meeting that's been covered. On the 23rd, I met with Matt Jacobson, Joel Son, and Darren Brooke in regards to the public facilities goal and capital improvement plans as part of our comprehensive study. Matt has been meeting on a routine basis with our department heads to collect information moving forward for that study. On the 23rd, I attended the AMC Government Relations Legislative Session Update. That was a great deal of information, as Commissioner Mojo mentioned. It's going to be a busy few weeks here. Yesterday, I met with Brian Milton, Rhonda Porter, Kathy McKay, and numerous staff from DHS in regards to some of the, the needs of the county detox, civil commitments, mental health issues, and we discussed programming, potential collaborative efforts there. And also participated yesterday afternoon in the Resource Recovery Center. There's been some value engineering going in the project and they're in the process of updating the plans, still with the goal of hoping to have a GMP before this board by May 25th. And again, with our discussion today, we will be meeting together as a strive group to put, bring forward a county retreat then on May 25th. We'll have it at the law enforcement center here at the county. And I will probably be looking in that noon to 4:30 or 3:30 timeframe. So I will get an agenda forward for everyone here in the next week or so. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I do want to add, I did not report on the PIC meeting on April 20th, but Commissioner Gross did fill us in on all of those things and everything we did there was acted on today, except we did have to delay Kurt Cannon's request.
A note to make sure that strategic planning day, that we address that on the calendar that Colleen puts out.
We'll do that. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mojo. And I brought to Mr. Larson's attention this morning, I understand that next week is National Nurses Week and I think we should, we've had an awful lot of nurses within our community that have done an awful lot of important things this last year, including our public health nurses, and I'm hopeful we can have another proclamation to read next, next week, so. With that in mind, Brian, do you have anything for us? Colleen? We're done. Okay, we got...